Hi, my name is Michael Pollak. I'm a data analyst. It's what I do for a living. I take huge rams and reels of data and I tell stories to our stakeholders about that. One of the things they're most concerned about are called KPIs, Key Performance Indicators. For this setting, a key performance indicator would be test scores, attendance, student safety. So I feel like we should ask ourselves every time that we have a policy in play, does this help with test scores? I don't think this one does. Does this help with attendance? I don't think this does. And does this help or hinder the educational process from our teachers to educators or students? I don't feel like this does either. This creates a level of bureaucracy and red tape that's not needed. Does this make students more safe in our schools? Studies would argue it doesn't. That's all the time I need.
Janine Adams, Concerned Taxpayer here in Kern County. The administrative burdens and potential litigation expense of the parental notification policy are immense. Teachers and staff should be spending their time educating and supporting students, not filling out paperwork and managing notifications. Our limited education dollars should be used to improve our schools and support our students, not spent unnecessarily. There are those on this board who have said that a policy should be adopted without consideration for potential litigation expense. This is fiscally irresponsible statement. As a concerned taxpayer, I am disturbed that the limited educational resources may be squandered to further an extreme political agenda. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emma de la Rosa and I'm a concerned community member urging you to reject trustee Sisneros' policy recommendation. Implementing or adopting such a policy is an infringement of students' privacy rights under California Education Code 49060. Not only would this policy violate a student's rights to privacy, but it would also result in a discriminatory effect and would be a clear violation of California Education Code 220, which prohibits you and the school system from discrimination pertaining to gender expression and gender orientation. In addition to the blatant violation of students' rights, accepting such a policy will result in detrimental mental health impacts. According to CDE data, data already shows chronic sadness among LGBTQ youth, with 70% of youth of students reporting chronic sadness. Think about that. Think about the impacts that this policy will create, not only, again, to the fiscal impact, but also the emotional impact that will occur to these students. Do you offer the resources to ensure that students who are already experiencing mental health impacts are being served adequately, or are we going to create a bigger problem? So please consider rejecting trustee Sisneros' policy recommendation. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank you for serving the students of Kern County. I understand it's not always easy or comfortable to be up there. At the heart of this question, which I do support the policy to inform parents, may lie with how a person sees adolescents. Some want to see them as adults capable of making permanent, life-changing decisions. Science does not support this view, as the frontal lobe of the brain is not fully developed until a person's in their early twenties, meaning they don't have the foresight needed to evaluate the long-term consequences of decisions. In this book, The Detransition Diary, shares the stories of those who embarked on the journey of transition with great hopes, but without a clear understanding of the consequences of transition, and they have suffered much harm as the result. My point is that adolescents are not able to make mature decisions, including whether or not transitioning is the best choice for them. Parents must be engaged in the decision-making process. Turning to another topic, I realize that policies are often driven by fear of expensive lawsuits. This district may be fearful the state of California suing them for informing parents, and at the same time concerned that parents may sue them for not telling them. An example of a personal lawsuit, of a parent lawsuit occurred when Jessica Cohen and her daughter Alicia reached a $100,000 settlement with Spackler Sheen School District over the district socially transitioning Cohen's 11-year-old daughter to a boy without her mother's knowledge or consent. When schools are socially transitioning students without their parents' involvement, this violates parents' rights. As you know, AB 1955 is on the governor's desk and will probably be solved into law. It's easy to predict there will be more lawsuits, and some of them will end up in the Supreme Court. The debate is a long way from being over, and there is much for the board to consider.
Good evening. My name is Aruna Lamine, and I'm the Vice President of the Democratic Women of Kern. First, I would like to commend all of you on this board and on previous boards for the Kern County Board of Education policies as they relate to teacher, student, and parent communication. As I researched these policies today, such as AR 5022, in preparation for tonight's meeting, I was struck by how clear, concise, thorough, and extensive the guidelines are. Parental involvement and notification were a clear focus throughout the policies. Parents are currently repeatedly encouraged to contact their child's teacher or school with any questions pertaining to their child or the curriculum. In turn, the Kern County Board of Education spells out everything they will do on their side to communicate with parents, and it's a lot. No one, after reading through all the policies on your website, can legitimately accuse the KCBOE of attempting in any way to withhold information or communication. The sad truth with the teachers that I know is that many of them already feel there is not enough time in the day, and they feel stressed out in their jobs, even the ones who enjoy teaching. They did not go to school to be cops. They are there because they want to teach. KCBOE Mission, Vision, and Values page states as the first core value, quote, "The needs of all children come first," unquote, not parents. I urge each one of you to also remember that very expensive and lengthy Kern County taxpayer-funded lawsuits, time, and resources will ensue if the Chino Valley policy is adopted. Money, time, and resources that we can all agree are much better spent on improving the lives and education of all students, and in turn, the community.
My name is Sam Haney Knight, and I come to you today not as a parent or a member of the school board, or as someone who is employed by the school, but as someone who is a transgender individual who was once a transgender youth. I think that the act of coming out to the parents is something that is very sacred and is something that enables trust between child and parent. To involve the schools in informing the parents is to take away that relationship-building bond that you would have with your parents. I think that it really concerns me, and I think about the future of America, and I think of the future of America's youth, and how these things could really affect them. Because if a child is to come out in school per se, and the parents are notified, that could be very traumatic for the child, because there are very many feelings that come with coming out, such as vulnerability, embarrassment, even shame. I would also like to ask you to think, why is it that the child is coming out to people at the school and not at home? Statistics show that many people in the LTGBQ community often have troubles at home due to their lifestyle. If you found out that your child's sexual orientation was different, would you want the school to tell you, or your child, so that they can come to you themselves? I also believe that if the Chino Hills policy winds up enacting something similar to the Protect Kids Act of 2024, that there are many children that, with the approval of their parents, receive gender-affirming care. And anyone who is LTGBQ or trans can tell you that the hoops you have to jump through, there are many. It is not an easy process, and that's why it's very regulated and taken very seriously. So please, think about America's youth and think about the children who are becoming themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. I come here today as a concerned parent. Today I've come to stand against the culture war dragged, that has dragged our schools and our children into the mix, into the violence. Our schools are supposed to be places where people get to pursue their passions and to find their place in society, and discover who they are and who we inspire to be. However, the exploration of possibilities outside of tradition offends ideological groups who believe in a strict enforcement of a narrow worldview. When we live in an ideological bubble, everything on the outside of the bubble becomes unfamiliar and terrifying. Thus, they can propagate whatever fears upon whatever subject they don't understand. Scared parents are scrambling over control of their child's identity, never realizing that when they are legal adults, they become their own people. Gender-affirming care doesn't exist so children can find comfort in an identity as feminine or as masculine as they identify. There is an extreme ideology that we may have caught glimpses of today. People performing public prayer with an obvious agenda. Outside of this agenda, they wish to say that we're trying to indoctrinate children, their children, push their agenda in these schools. Our schools are pushing no agenda other than the education and act of giving our children the world, allowing them to perceive all the future possibilities before them as a proper education should allow. However, this agenda is obscured by people who do not understand gender-affirming care. It's kind of a stanky idea that children are being brainwashed or therapeutically led into believing that they're somehow of an ambiguous identity. But this is misleading information that has led to such extremism and opposition in our schools.
Thank you. My name is Gail Purdy, and I want to thank you for allowing the public a chance to be heard, because it is important, isn't it? I want to personally thank Laurie Sisneros as one of her constituents and Mary Little, who's of like mind in participating in protecting the education of Kern County's children and the rights of the parents who live with the consequences of the choices. I hope that other representatives will see and follow their wisdom. Engagement: Build community trust and confidence in Kern's public education system by maintaining a safe and supportive climate where parents are engaged in their child's education. That's out there on the wall. And work in partnership with educators to provide an environment for students to thrive, an environment for students to thrive, where parents are engaged in their child's education. Building community trust and confidence in Kern's public education system by maintaining a safe and supportive climate where parents are engaged in their child's education. And that's the goal, is that parents should be involved, and it sounds like there's a trust relationship. It sounds like that that is the goal of the Kern County Superintendent of Schools, and I support that, and support the parents' right so that they can trust when they send their kids to school. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Terry Maxwell. I can tell you that, in a nutshell, that I think it's important that this board give parental notification in terms of a policy. And I think that for the people who are saying, oh, well, you know, if you notify them, the child's going to be in some sort of a danger, I think the child would probably be motivated to talk to their parents if they know that they go to school and start doing gender transition, that the parent's going to be informed anyway. I think that actually would open up a discussion, not negate one. And as far as limited resources, you know, your resources are only limited to the freedoms that you want to choose to have. If you don't want any freedoms, then go ahead and take the money that the state of California wants you to take and do what they say that you should do. Or you can be a board that does what's right for the kids, what's right for the parents. You know, it used to be the PTA, Parent Teachers Association, and it's gotten away from that. But I also want to make a comment on allowing the board to organize the public comments. Persons wishing to speak should hand a speaker's card in before the meeting starts. I got here one minute after the meeting last time you had a meeting, and I was denied the right to put in a card. Now, I've been to a lot of different meetings, a lot of different boards. This is the only board that hasn't even discussed something, and you've eliminated the possibility of people addressing you on something that's really important to them. I'm not sure why you're putting time limits on people, time limits on this conversation. It used to be with Parent Teachers Association, and they'd stay there all night until they had covered everything. I'm a little bit ashamed that this board is really trying to make it so that people can't comment unless you come in on time. I was one minute late, and the reason I was late was because I stopped twice out front. You were doing the flag sill a little bit early, and the person who was there, a young lady that I know, she was at the same meeting I was, and she just told me, oh, I'm sorry, you're a minute late. I would change your policy to somebody comes in here and wants to talk to you, and it's still on, it hasn't been addressed as an agenda item, they should have the right to talk. Thank you.
Hello, Sienna Harper, and I am here with, actually, my company Party Around. I'm just going to read what I have to say really quick. Under California Education Code Sections 49060 and 220, and the Family Educational and Privacy Act, youth rights to privacy from peers and parents are protected. They state that youth reserve the right to autonomy and informational privacy. Also, clearly stating that school authorities only have the right to notify parents of change in records, including gender and attraction orientation, if it is believed that that said to youth well-being is in danger, with also proof and confirmation from that youth member. Also, California Education Code 218, public schools are required to receive LGBT cultural training for their teachers and other staff that serve students every two years, provide LGBT resources, and create LGBT-centered policies and compliant procedures, including anti-bullying and harassment, all things you clearly are not complying with. This policy you're trying to push is proof that I have, and I have alerted the DOG reps, and I'm working closely with them, and we're ready to interfere. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak here to you today. My name is Hortensia Cabral, and Paula Bray is my representative. I want to address the critical issue that has profound implications for the safety and well-being of our children, especially those in the LGBTQ community. The notification of parents when a child is not ready to come out. And the issue that comes to mind, which I discussed last time I talked to you guys here, is the story of a little boy named Gabriel Fernandez, who lived in the Palmdale area and was brutally murdered by his mother and her boyfriend because he was perceived to be gay. He didn't say he was gay, he was perceived to be gay. And that is a problem that some of these children face. They might not be ready to come out, and that could be strictly for self-preservation. I want to encourage you guys that instead of using your energy to stir up fear and target vulnerable children that can't defend themselves, how about you take some time to go visit the Richardson Center? That's a center that you guys overlook. I drove through there last week, and it does not look good. The parking structure looks atrocious. You guys are putting up fences that make it look like it's a prison. You guys have a very nice area here. How about you guys make an effort to modernize that center? Spend some energy doing that. How about support programs at Camp Keep? I know our school districts go through you guys to send our kids to Camp Keep. It's very expensive to send children to Camp Keep. Find ways to generate more revenue to be able to make that more affordable for our schools. And finally, again, rather than targeting LGBTQ kids, maybe invest some time and energy in creating programs that educate our children about fentanyl. Thank you so much for your time.
Good morning, or afternoon, or evening, whatever it is. Hey, a lot of these people that are just talked have made a lot of good sense about what teachers were not sent to school to learn, or to teach. They're to teach the basics of knowledge, you know, math, writing, arithmetic, those things, not LBGTQ agendas, and they shouldn't be wasting tax dollars on that. If they need therapeutic help, then they need to go where that is, but don't put it in on the children and try to bring those children, other normal children, into that rabbit hole. Now, the Fourteenth Amendment came into play because the liberals of that day wanted to use identity politics to control who they didn't want to be heard, mostly former slaves and women. Today, the liberals are using the identity politics for the people that they do not want to be heard either. That would be the concerned parents that want to protect their children. The Amendment, the Fourteenth Amendment, according to the courts, in some of the rulings, they say it's there for the rights of the parents to direct in schooling of their own children up to the age of 18. After 18, these people can do whatever they want without parent influence. But up until then, my children are my children. I shouldn't have somebody undermining a normal life at school. That's not what my tax dollars are paid for. Another case, Due Process Clause states that in these areas, that the state cannot enter in the private realm of the family. My family is, my kids up to 18. They're talking about excess paperwork of notifying the parents. What about the excess paperwork and curriculum coming in to indoctrinate my child or my grandchildren to a lifestyle that's not, that's just deviant?
Hello, my name's Ellen Schaffhauser. I'm a retired teacher from the Sierra Sands School District. I taught junior high and continuation high school over in Ridgecrest. I taught science and health and sex education. And as a retired teacher, I've had students come to me to confide in me on private matters because I taught sex education. And there were suspected pregnancies, believing they might be gay, or possibly lesbian, or trans. My first question was to ask, what is it that makes you think this is a possibility? And sometimes misinformation about, let's say, pregnancy was the source of their concern. Other times, what they told me had more confirming possibilities, that they were right about their concern. My second question was always, have you discussed this with your parents? And most times, the answer was no. Out of fear, maybe well-founded, and fear, and maybe not. I'd say eventually your parents will know, and it's best that you say it to them rather than someone else does. So for me, as a teacher, my encouragement to confide in the parents was tantamount. But if I were required to out a student, it would be a breach of trust between us as well as a possible danger to the student. I say a possible danger. I am an advocate for both parents' rights to know about their children's health and well-being, and to be able to guide them in their way and their own values that dictate. I'm also an advocate of a child's right for confidentiality, particularly in the light of the possibility of harsh treatment at home or by bullies at school. Also, students talk to each other and know that there are certain, oh, teachers you cannot trust, and that I did not want to become. So thank you very much.
Good evening, Superintendent and Trustees. I wish to comment tonight on the parental rights issue that we face today in our public schools. Let me inform you, your board, of the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act of 1974. The Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act is a federal law that protects the privacy of students' records. The law applies to all schools that receive funds from the U.S. Department of Education. The Act affords parents the right to have access to their children's educational records. We also have the Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. The Due Process Clause protects the fundamental rights of the parents to direct the care, upbringing, and education of their children. The Ninth Amendment allows parents to direct the upbringing of their children, protected from federal interference and the United Nations Convention on the Rights of the Child. With federal law and the U.S. Constitution protecting parental rights of their children, I see no legal or moral way your board can stand in the way of parents' demand. I have something else, too. I urge your board to look at the NEA, National Education Association, and their recent convention in Philadelphia. This organization is the largest union labor in the U.S., some 3 million members. The president of this organization gave a loud, boisterous speech that you have to watch. I really would like you to watch that. She pushed their need to raise resources to promote their far-left, woke, DEI, and gender identity educational movement. I strongly suggest you watch this on the internet and judge for yourself if this behavior is in the best interest of our educators and students. Thank you for letting me speak.
Good evening to the trustees, concerned parents, educators. I too am a concerned parent, and I am actually for parent notification. At the heart of every successful educational journey lies a strong partnership between schools, parents, and the students. The partnership is built on trust, transparency, and open communication. When it comes to our children, parents should not be left out of the equation. My story is one where I was fortunate. My son had questions regarding gender, gender identity, and those types of things, and he went directly to his teacher and spoke to his teacher about it. His teacher is the one who directed him to come home to talk to me, also to, she also called and notified me herself. So in the end, the parent notification, I was able, because of parent notification, I was able to sit down and have a conversation with my son and address his questions and his concerns. Notifying parents about these things aligns with ethical standards, and the students should be able to feel protected, but the parents should also be given the opportunity to provide that protection. When parents are aware of things, they're better equipped to provide necessary support at home. Failing to notify the parents can create misunderstandings. That's all.
Good evening, Superintendent Mendiburro, President Giordano, and Trustees. My name is Abby Lanick of California Policy Center. My colleagues and I have attended board meetings over the past year in support of parental rights in children's education, and have been pleased to see improved policy emerge. Thank you for all that you're doing. Honesty is always the best policy when it comes to administrators and teachers communicating with parents about their children. The Supreme Court has consistently ruled that parents possess the fundamental right to raise their children and to make decisions regarding their child's health, education, and care. Every parental notification policy that has been adopted in California requires parental notification only when a child explicitly asks a teacher or administrator to change their name or pronouns in class at school or on official or unofficial records. We argue that it's no different than any other policy that would require parents to be notified when a child goes to the school nurse or joins a club. A few of you may be concerned with litigation occurring in other counties that is related to policies similar to the one trustee Sisneros is proposing tonight. I'm here to dispel those worries. The judge on the case against Chino Valley Unified School District says that they can notify parents about name and pronoun changes on official and unofficial school records. Another judge said that the Temecula Valley Unified's policy is perfectly legal in Riverside County Superior Court. Parental notification policies are winning in the courts in California, and Kern County officials should not be deterred by AB 1955. The relationship between teacher and parent is sacrosanct. Secrecy erodes trust between parents and teachers, and providing for the secret transitioning of children to a new gender identity without notifying parents is unethical. I believe that children are best served when there is open and healthy communication between them and all the adults in their life. I support and love people no matter how they identify and belong. I just believe that parents should be involved in this important and critical aspect of their child's life and development. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby.
My name is Bowen Parker. I'm here today to speak against parental notification policy. Encouraging students to further hide who they are will be detrimental to their education and their emotional well-being. If a kid doesn't speak to their parents, it is probably for a reason. Trans and gender nonconforming kids are already at risk of increased violence at home. It's deeply inappropriate for this Board of Education to worsen this. Social transition is also low-risk and completely reversible with as little as a haircut. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Belen Karavsko. I am an eighth-grade teacher with the Baker-Swilce City School District. I'm a community member, a parent. I'm a grad student at Cal State Northridge, and I'm a member of the Kern County Educators for Ethnic Studies. for Ethnic Studies. I wanted to speak tonight on behalf of some students, my eighth graders who approached me this year and requested that I use my lunch period to help them run their GSA Club, which stands for the Gay-Straight Alliance. I was honored to do so because it provided a space for students to be themselves without fear. I would like to say that, you know, it's very hard to come to school these days. There's so much going on in the world. I don't think any of us have heard from teachers that aren't experiencing very difficult situations in the classroom with anxiety, depression, students who no longer want to speak, students who are no longer making eye contact. These are all things post-pandemic and just with everything going on in the world, there's a lot of fear. On top of that, we constantly refer to students in deficit ways, right? They're called delinquents or below grade level and so there's just a lot stacked on students. They need absolutely, it is critical for them to have safe places to be able to just be, just exist. And so in this club, you know, my students felt free to be themselves, without judgment, without criticism. This might have been the only place on campus in their three years in middle school where they have felt that. I know that they're, as eighth graders, they're looking forward to going to high school, graduating and going to high school, so they want to know, what is it going to be like? Are there going to be places where teachers, don't tell me, that's not your name, that's not your pronouns, I'm changing it right now. Are they going to have to face that for another four years and be ridiculed by their peers? So I was very happy to share with them that there are things in place that'll help protect them so they can feel safe.
Please, your time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Montero and I am with the Dolores Huerta Foundation as their youth organizer. So I am very close to my youth groups. We are a very all-inclusive space and the very, the most important thing that we want for the youth is for them to feel safe. Now, I understand a lot of adults are coming up here saying that parents, this and that, but a lot of the time, we don't know that parents may have a toxic relationship with their child at home or they may not have the most supportive people basically listening to them when it comes to private stuff like their transitioning phase or whatever it is when it comes to like pronouns, identity. And so I just want to, I'm up here because this is a violation of student privacy. It increases mental health risks. It's a discriminatory impact because it indirectly targets transgender and nonconforming students, potentially violating anti-discrimination laws and equal protection rights, the erosion of trust, and the most favorite thing that everyone loves to talk about, the taxes, right? The financial cost and resource drain. So this is very important. I think it's very important to know that children are at risk of going home and not feeling safe. Children are at risk of going to school and not feeling safe. So what's the point? Do you guys want children to go to school, to be excited to go, to feel as if it's an all-inclusive space for them? Or would you want them to literally fear going to school, going home, all because you just want to invade their privacy? Thank you very much and thanks for listening to me.